Okay, I am calling the meeting to order. It is now 7:06 PM. And I will ask all to stand and recite the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As I start the meeting, I will just remind everybody, we are holding this meeting in a hybrid manner, and we are allowed to be doing this kind of thing where part of our people are remote and are not because the governor has for, this is the 31st renewal of the emergency. And, I mean, yeah, it is the 31st, for 21st renewal, it's ordinance, Governor's Order 2021-31, the 21st renewal. We have to make a correction here, I wrote down 31st, but it's actually the 21st renewal. Extending the Public Health Emergency Order Ensuring the Town the Ability to Convene the Public Meetings Remotely If Needed. Here we go. We've done our pledge, and Joan, could you please do the rest of the roll call?
I'm looking for the 21st word that you talked about. Is it Z?
Yes.
It's the bottom of the first paragraph.
Yes, second and final line.
Okay. Roll call. Diana Dobree?
Here.
Michael Martinez is virtual. Ralph Fox?
Here.
Mike Lanciaoni?
Here.
Rich Young?
Here.
I'm here. Laura is virtual. Gary Bendix?
Is Gary Bendix trying to get on or not?
No.
Okay.
He's not here?
No.
No, I didn't think any of them were going to be here.
At least she is, Swistec is here.
Yeah, Wake's not here. Swistec is there by virtual, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. President, Park Board, it's absent. Dolly, Matt Boone, absent. One Plan Administrator?
Absent.
Absent. Advisory Plan Commission, Ralph Fox, we know he's here. Building Commissioner, Code Enforcement?
Here.
Website is, she is absent, she is killed.
Absent. And Ross Kowalski is next.
Okay, so thank you very much, Joan. Let us move on to adopting the meeting agenda. This afternoon, I sent out my third iteration of the agenda, version three. At that point, I had just removed, under New Business, I believe, A, which now we have something else became A. So I would like you to once again just review this, and if there are any additions or corrections to the minute, please let me know.
I noticed at the end, you have a question mark for BZA meeting. I assume that's appropriate? I mean, we don't know that there's going to be a meeting because...
I think they may have, they said, I think they may have one planned, but I don't, I didn't know the date of the plan. Meaning, Joan, do you happen to, you know, if they did decide to do a meeting?
I don't think there's going to be one in January.
Okay, all right.
Not in January.
Okay. All right.
What is that, January?
Then we can, then we just leave it as a blank until we hear something differently.
That's fine.
Since we're on the meeting, I want to make a comment. Anyone who's involved or would share any of the committees, not committees, but the Plan Commission, and the, if the Town Council wants to stay on the second Tuesday, that's okay. Advisory Plan Commission, I'll need to know what their minutes are, I mean, minutes, their meeting dates are, because I have to post them in the Park Board the same way, if there's any changes.
Okay, Joan, as far as the Plan Commission is, I'll double check the first Tuesday for the year, and see if there's any conflicts.
Just let me know. I'm looking for all of, the whole 12 months.
Yeah, I'll check them and let you know.
That's okay, so I have it so I can get it posted. It's one of our regulations.
Okay. Any other comments? Corrections, additions, or is everybody good with the agenda the way it is? If so, then I need a motion to approve the agenda.
That moves.
Thank you. Mike Lanciaoni wants to accept.
And I'll second that.
Ralph, seconds. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 What do we have, four ayes?
Yep.
Unless, you know, Michael says something. Okay. Thank you. Now, let's move on to the minutes. We received the minutes from Joan. And has everyone had a chance to read through the minutes?
Yes, unfortunately, Joan, it was late in the day when I had a chance to review them, so I have a couple minor...
That's okay. I'm getting smart. We aren't assigned, she's not going to sign her ticket, you got to get all your...
Yeah, I'll give you my notes every day.
Okay, go ahead, give them to me now, because you have to vote on them. Dinah, if you can, come back and sign them later.
Okay.
Okay, so, well, if you want to do this kind of stuff...
Go ahead, please. You have to make the corrections, so, well...
Okay, under Call, Order, Pledge, Virtual, there's a underline that's just hanging there that has no purpose.
I guess that is mine, isn't it?
There's a lot of these things. I mean, it's just a first pass.
And then there's one, under Adoption Meeting, Ralph Fox made a motion, it's got...
Yep, and then, under October 12th, Council Meeting Minutes, where it says October 12th, there's a "the" in there instead of a "t h".
Okay.
And then, if I jump over to Request for Public Records, there's just a little bit of a typo between October and Plan.
Okay.
Okay, so we get down to the Park Board Comment Range. Young reported the damaged tree on the old trail. It was up that by Ralph Fox. I think that's the damaged bench, not tree.
You're right.
Okay. And then, under Advisory Plan Commission, the word permit is misspelled, there's an extra "d" in there.
What?
Advisory Plan Commission.
They approved one permit?
And another.
Oh. Okay.
And then, under Building Commissioner, Code Enforcement, you have ETR, and I think this should be STR, Special Use.
Yeah, I think I sent you the wrong one. But that's okay, continue.
And then, a couple of words after that, will be, there's a hanging underscore there. And, under White Ditch Drainage Board, the word issue should be issues.
Okay.
Sorry to be picky.
Well, like I said, I think I sent you the wrong one.
Okay, under Unfinished Business, a note should be added to the renewal process and transferability of STRs that Ralph Fox volunteered to create a resolution for these. That was what was decided into meeting. Like I said, I'll give you my notes, Joan.
Okay, give me your notes on that, because, like I said, I think that is in the revised copy.
Okay. Under Confucation of Town Ordinances, Dinah stated that she would lead this effort.
That's right. That's what I have on that. So, if you want to quit going through this, this last portion has all been changed. Everything on it's been changed.
And then, last thing, under Miscellaneous Business, that Celebration of Town's 75th Years, Jean Paxton report, that did not occur. She did not have a report, and she wasn't here. I know that was on the agenda for the meeting, but it did not occur. Is that correct?
No, Dinah reported for her. Dinah said that she, they had a, what do you call it?
They were going to have a meeting.
No, I think they, oh, they were going to have a meeting, is that what it was?
Well, at the time, they were going to have a meeting, but they have had a meeting since...
One time.
Yes. That's all I got.
I'd like to remind, I don't know if we can, but you do have to keep minutes, memorandums of what's discussed at these meetings, because Town Council's going to be used for that, if you don't want to...
No, 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 I had nothing to do with it.
Yeah, we have, none of us have anything to do with it, but we will tell them.
Jean, I know Jean, you thought this, this meeting was last week, and she was prepared to come and give a report, but, so I kind of half expected her to show up this evening.
She sent me a short little report, just to, you know, earlier, because I asked her about it.
Okay, so we'll add to the list.
So I just have a short report from her.
Okay.
You know, and, and that was it, so. And they are aware that they have to keep records, and it'll be open meetings to anybody who wants to come.
Yeah, it has to be.
Yeah, they're going to be, they're going to be open meetings, so. I did remind them about that. Okay.
Yeah, each time you have Town Council members, that has to be...
Okay. Thank you very much for pointing that out, so I need a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
I'm all.
Okay. Rich Young?
I'll second.
Second. Ralph Fox, seconds. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Five.
Thank you, that's five then, okay.
Thank you, Michael.
All right. All right, so next, we would move on to appointments to the Advisory Plan Commission, and we have only one member here. Andrew Bertocchini contacted me and said that he was still tied up with work and could not get here on time for our meeting tonight, and...
What's his name?
Andrew Bertocchini, I could spell that for you later, I don't want to make a mistake.
Okay.
And, and then our next member, Isaac Zekel, is here. Okay. Hi, Isaac.
Hi.
Oh, you spelled it wrong.
Z E C K E L.
Right.
I just have to figure out Bertocchini, how many Cs there were in there. I think two, because it's...
That's okay. It's for me later.
Okay, yes, and, okay, and the third candidate is Chris Wolf with a K.
And Chris couldn't make it tonight, I would...
I could, I didn't hear back from him now. I mean, I thought he was going to be here, but I didn't hear back, so...
And he may not be here, one of the firefighters...
Oh, that's right.
...to draw her, she's 48 years old, she can't, so, and the latest tonight.
Okay, that's where he is.
Fire is all done, so...
Okay, that's...
So I don't think they're going to get any firefighters.
Okay, that's okay. So, in this case, and we're still making an announcement, that we are appointing these three individuals to be the new members for the Advisory Plan Commission. They will be replacing Ray Dumberis, who has, still has two years to serve, and I am hoping that, you know, I, this is the position I'm putting Isaac into. We have Andrew Bertocchini, who is replacing Ralph's old position, which stayed, became empty, and that is a three-year position going forward. And Chris Wolf will take over for Howard Jeline, who also had a three-year term, still after this year, to go. Their race would finish out in 2023, Ralph is 2024, as is Howard's. So, this is the way I just, you know, just by picking out of a hat, fill these positions. And we're very happy and pleased that these three individuals have volunteered to join the, you know, Advisory Plan Commission, because, you know, we're a small town, so we appreciate all the help that we could get, and are welcoming them with open arms. And, and, you know, just as a reminder that the Advisory Plan Commission's purpose for the town is to help in the planning of what takes place in the town, what our future's going to hold. They help the town develop the comprehensive plan, and then help to make sure that that comprehensive plan actually is carried out. They help us to make sure that ordinances in the town, you know, are followed, especially with regards to anything that deals with planning and building in the town. So, we are grateful for the Plan Commission's help, and look forward to working with the new members, you know, the best we can, and the best, you know, that you can, and we're very grateful that, you know, you have volunteered. Joan, I don't think that the Plan Commission members need to do an oath.
Yes, they do.
Oh, they do?
Yes.
That was just the BZA.
Yes, they do, and I do need to remind you, you have never come in to walk over the, their limits.
The limits, those are the ones that I just announced, the limits of time.
Where did you get that from?
A list that was being kept by the Plan Commission, I got it from Dorothy, and I had that, there's a document, the list, when everybody got...
Right, I don't think that is correct, because I don't think some of these were voided for their second time around. You come in and check with me.
Okay.
Before we send a letter, tell them that they get appointed.
Okay, so in other words, you were recommending that we do not do any kind of an oath tonight for Isaac?
We're not doing any oaths tonight, they all have to come in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, then we will check.
Sorry, Isaac, I thought it...
Yeah.
It's not that simple.
Okay, but these are the three candidates that will be with us, so, you know, okay.
That's good.
Yeah, we have, absolutely, so thank you so much for showing up, you know, here, and then I guess we'll do the official room part.
So, Isaac, what I'll do is I will, I'll send you an email with when the next meeting is for sure, and you can get signed in by Joan, but I have some other information to give you, but we'll do that outside of this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming in. Okay, good. All right, good night then, okay, bye-bye. Okay, we are going to move now to resolutions and ordinances. And the first topic we have listed is the Short Term Rental Resolution, which was worked on first by Ralph, and then submitted to Laura, and Laura, I assume you hear me, and I'm giving it to you to handle from here on.
Okay, Ms. Lewis, can you give me a resolution number for this?
I could have given it to you if you'd asked me, but I'll do it now.
Okay, well, I'll just, I'll just go ahead and read it, and then whenever you can get one, that'll be fine.
Good.
Okay? Short term rental, well, before I start, let me say, I haven't received any feedback on this, so let's just read through it, and see if anyone has any concerns. So, it's entitled, Short Term Rental Permit Renewal and Transferability Resolution. Whereas the Town Council, the Town of Michigan Shores maintains ordinances and resolutions in its Town Municipal Code, you're apt to refer to as the code, whereas the Michigan Shores County Mission Approved Adopting Ordinance 2020-02, Short Term Rental Permits Safety and Security Program, April 7, 2020, by Operation of the ID Code 36-4-607, Section E4A, became law when a report of Plan Commission Approval was given to the Town Council on April 14, 2020. And whereas the Town of Michigan Shores acting within all guidelines of IC 36-1-24 and type of short-term rentals, an ordinance 2020-02 requires zoning variance approval by Board of Zoning Appeals for a defined town process to obtain a permit for all short-term rentals of secondary residents. Whereas a short-term rental, also known as STR, Safety and Security Program was established by the Town of Michigan Shores to protect the health, safety, and welfare of all Michigan Shores residents and guests, by ensuring short-term rental units are safe for guests are proper size relative to the number of overnight occupants, that all guests are aware of the applicable Michigan Shores ordinances, and whereas clarification is needed regarding STR renewals and transferability. Now, therefore, is hereby ordained and enacted by the Town Council of the Town of Michigan Shores, Port County Indiana, as follows. So the first section is Short Term Rental Permit Renewal. Ordinance 2020-02, Short Term Rental Permits, Safety and Security Program, requires the annual renewal of the STR permit. This resolution clarifies the process by which this must occur. STR permits expire one year from the date of issuance. To renew the STR permit for another year, the owner or authorized agent of the STR must follow these steps. Step number one, contact the Code Enforcement Office, third, the Town of Michigan Shores, to request the renewal of a one-year STR permit. The CEO will provide, or, I'm sorry, will approve a new one-year permit if there have been no changes in the terms of the permit and no outstanding violations of the STR ordinance. Number two, if changes to the STR permit are requested by the property owner or required by changes to the property or home, CEO will review the changes to determine if the special use grant must be reviewed by the Board of Zoning Appeals, also known as BZA. If the CEO determines that the BZA must be reviewed, special use approval, the homeowner must petition the BZA according to the procedure set forward in the STR ordinance, the BZA procedure. If the BZA approves a property for an STR special use grant, the homeowner shall apply for an STR permit following most current STR permit approval process used by the Town Council. If the CEO determines that a change in the property is minor in nature and only requires a new review by the Town Council, the homeowner shall follow the procedure set forward in the most current STR permit approval process used by the Town Council. Paragraph number three, if the STR permit has been expired for more than 90 days, a new permit must be requested through the most current STR permit approval process used by the Town Council. And four, if the STR permit has been revoked for section B6, of the 2020- that should be 02, there's a typo there, 2020-02, Short Term Rental Permits, Safety and Security Program Ordinance, the owner must request a new permit through the most current STR permit approval process used by the Town Council. Next section, it goes to Short Term Rental Permit Transferability. The STR permit is voided when a permitted STR property transfers ownership. The new owners of a STR permitted by a prior owner must submit a merchant certificate along with a signed, notarized commitment letter to the BZA to maintain the special use granted to the previous property owner. The new property owners must also submit an application for a STR permit in accordance to the most current STR permit approval process used by the Town Council. Repeal provision, all prior ordinances or resolutions or parks that are inconsistent with any of the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Subertibility clause, any section clause, provision, or portion of this resolution is deemed to be invalid or unconstitutional by a court, county, and jurisdiction. Such provisions shall not affect any other section, clause, provision, or portion of this ordinance, passed and adopted by the Town Council, the Town of Michigan Shores County Reporting, we have this 13th day of December, I'm sorry, it should be 14th day of December 2021. Questions, comments, or concerns?
Any questions from any of the board members?
Well, of course, I'm good with it.
Okay.
Dan, you're still...
You were okay, Rich, when you read through it?
I'm good. I'm ready for that.
You're good? Okay. All right, well, then, in that case, I think that since our resolution requires only one reading and one vote, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve this resolution for short-term rental renewals and/or transferabilities, well, not transfers, but with regards to short-term rental renewals. I guess that's what it's called, correct?
This is Michael, I'll allow the ability to just accept the first reading.
Okay, but I'm not sure if Michael can actually make the motion, since you're still remote, on this kind of a vote for a resolution.
That's okay.
You might be able to make a motion, that's right, you may not be able to vote.
I'll make the motion.
You'll make the motion? Okay, very good. Okay, Ralph? Ralph Fox?
I'll second.
Okay, and Rich Young, seconds the motion to accept, I mean, to approve the Short Term Rental Renewal Resolution. Okay. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye. The ayes have it. Four zero, since Michael is not here, but we have a quorum, so that's four, we're great.
So, Joan, you picked out a number?
Yes, I picked out a number. 2021-10.
Dash ten.
Thank you, Ralph. Okay, thank you. Okay, I will send you, I will send a final version in a few minutes, and then everyone can sign it while they're here. While they're here, Michael can sign it while they're here.
Joan had a question? What did you know? You were going to say something.
I'm going to ask if we had a copy of it to sign to make sure.
Well, she's going to send a clean one, with the clean of the typos, so, okay.
Okay, thank you, Laura.
You're all.
Okay, so we move on to the next, which is the Salary Ordinance for 2022.
Okay, we ready?
Ready.
All right. A continuing ordinance talks about compensation rates and salaries for the Town of Michigan Shores at the end of the year 2022. Again, this is second read, so I'll go through this quickly, second. Whereas the Town Council of the Town of Michigan Shores, Indiana, continuously and previously established, are providing compensation rates and salaries for employees and officials of the Town of Michigan Shores, whereas the Town Council's previously approved, act ments, resolutions, and ordinances for the purpose of providing compensation rates and salaries have been continued and intended to be without expiration from year to year, whereas a statutory deadline established by the state of the towns to adopt a salary ordinance for 2022 is December 31, 2021, since the salary ordinance must be adopted in the year preceding its effectiveness. Whereas it is the intention of the Town Council to continue the compensation rates at the most recently enacted budget level in 2022 and beyond, or until modified or amended by official action of the Town Council. Now, therefore, is hereby ordained and enacted by the Town Council of the Town of Michigan Shores, Port County Indiana, as follows. Existing compensation rates and salaries for the employees, officials, and sort of the Town of Michigan Shores, Port County Indiana, as follows. Existing compensation rates and salaries for the employees. This got redone, I think we did that last time.
I don't, I went over it in a one hour, but I'm repeating myself here, so for some reason that got duplicated.
Okay, I'll fix that before I send it out, my apologies. So shall continue the most recently enacted budget at a round levels and rates for the year 2022 and beyond, or until modified or amended by official action under law. So 2022 budget rates are as follows here. Town Council President, $2,500. Town Council Members, $2,000. Court Treasurer, $1,377. Court Treasurer, Refuse, $750. Building Commissioner, $5,000. BZA Chair, $750. BZA Secretary, $12 per hour. Vote Enforcement Officer, the slash Building Commissioner's going to be marked out, so that edit is going to be on the revised version, because Building Commissioner is listed above. So for just Vote Enforcement Officer, $25 per hour plus $45 per month, cell phone. Road Commissioner, $750. Park and Recreation Chair, $750. Plan Commission Chair, $750. Plan Commission Secretary, $750. Road Meanest, $25 per hour. Part-Time Officer, $6,900. Refuse, $3,000. Repeal provision, all prior ordinances or resolutions or parks that are inconsistent with any of the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Subertibility clause, any section, clause, provision, or portion of this ordinance is deemed to be invalid or unconstitutional by court, county, and jurisdiction. Such provisions shall not affect any other section, clause, provision, or portion of this ordinance, passed and adopted, and today is left flying, but this is second read, so I can put the 14th day of December in there, and this passed.
All right, any comments and questions from the council members?
I do.
We don't have just a Code Enforcement Officer on the, what we've been paying.
You've had her listed as Code Enforcement Officer, Assistant Building Commissioner. That's what's been listed. If we want to change it, we're going to have to amend it next year. You do have to list it according to what we have as positions right now. And that's what was in the budget. We didn't have anything listed for just a Code Enforcement Officer, I'm sorry.
Okay, so just to clarify, because the budget that was submitted and approved already lists as Code Enforcement Officer slash Assistant Building Commissioner, that title must remain the same way?
That must be remain.
Okay.
You can still leave the $25 an hour plus $45 a month, ever cellphone.
Yeah.
And if you want to come back and withstand as a Code Enforcement Building Commissioner at the same rate, then we won't have to change the rate.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, then, that's fine.
But it has to be amended. You cannot just pick this stuff out of the air.
So Laura, are you hearing what we're talking about, then?
I mean, I'm not, but I can say this, so if I did understand correctly, Joan wants it to remain Code Enforcement Officer slash Assistant Building Commissioner, $25 per hour, is that correct?
That is correct, that's the job position. Laura, that job position was approved previously, and we had to go through the same thing to amend it.
Yeah, I'm on board with that, then, yeah, that'll be fine.
I don't have an issue with the job...
And just leave, if that's what you want, at $25 an hour? I mean, it's...
Yeah, we're just talking about the job description, the title.
No, let's talk about both right now, so we know what to do.
Well, I think the numbers are correct, we've talked about that for months and months.
Yes.
But it's the description of the job title that we're discussing.
Oh, you're just, just for this is what you want?
Yes. Okay, all right, well, then, we leave that the way it is, Assistant Building listed under that, okay, and then we work on that for the next years, when we set up next year's, you know, budget and...
Well, not this next year's budget.
No, I want next year for the year after.[1718.41] No, I want next year for the year after. For the year after.
No, it would be for the same year. If you amend this in 2022.
Oh, I understand.
To show it.
Okay.
And it can still remain.
Okay.
At the $25 now.
All right, thank you.
You'll have to change the position. We don't have a position.
All right, thank you very much.
No matter how much council wants that.
That clarifies that. Okay, thank you very much.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Laura, so we are going to hold a vote now to approve this salary ordinance with the original language.
It does have a number already, and I don't know if everyone's aware of it.
2021-06, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
All right, so, I need a motion?
Well, this is Ralph. I'll make a motion to accept the ordinance as defined.
Okay, thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ralph Fox moves. Michael Lanciaoni seconds the approval of the salary ordinance for 2020. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the ayes have it. It is four to zero.
Four ayes. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, added ordinance for additional appropriations, Joan, because you had mentioned that.
It's my ordinance.
Okay. Okay. Now, I don't think any of us has seen anything like that.
No, it was advertised twice in the local newspaper.
Okay.
And it was also put on our webpage. I asked the man to put it on the webpage.
Okay.
I never double-checked to see that it was done. What it's for is we've spent, I shouldn't say we, I didn't do it, what the council has spent in addition to the budget. And we have, since the code enforcement officer slash assistant building commissioner went in 2021, we have to fill that slot with some money. We've been running an empty balance all year. So that spot has to fill with money. I don't know exactly what it's gonna be, somewhere probably around 18,000 or 20,000. And then, we have to have 14,000, and what I have estimated from what I could gather, 14,000 extra for legal fees over and above the budget. And then, we're putting in monies to cover the lease pickup, because we have to start with some type of money in there.
Uh huh.
And we didn't last year, so to cover this year, we have to put money in there for that. We have to cover it also for the plan commission secretary, because that wasn't, the plan commission secretary and the code enforcement officer were both amended, if you remember correctly. So, in a total, we have $50,300 that is going to be for what we call other services and charges, and it will be coming out of the economic development, what they call ceded funds.
And this is for 2021?
Yep, to cover what we spent in 2021. We have money, so we paid the bill, but we just have to rectify it with additional, and we had no idea what else was going to happen, that's why it towards the, well, this was started in October.
Okay. Any questions? Council members?
Where did you say this money's coming?
The, our reserve.
The economic development.
Oh, I'm sorry, you mean off the budget item. Off the budget item. It's what they call ceded. It comes from the county, and it's been built up over the years, so we're gonna use it, some of it now. It's, no, it's in next year's budget. But as you know, most of, I shouldn't say, less than 50% of the budget is from tax dollars, you know that, okay? The rest of it is from riverboat, or other little things that we get.
Okay. Any other questions? Are we all good?
Well, you know, I would like to read it, or at least have Laura read it before I can operate.
Is this something that we can finalize at the last meeting of the year, Joan?
I prefer not to, because always have to be made for the year end. If she wants to read it...
Did you send her a copy?
No, I didn't, but I can read it.
Okay, then, please read it. Yes, that would be good.
The additional appropriation resolution slash ordinance, we can do it either way, 2021-09, whereas it has been determined that it is not necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in annual budget. Now therefore, section one, EDIT, slash resolved by the town council of Michigan Shores, Michigan Shores, civil town, Leport County, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named for the purpose specified subject to laws governing the same. Fund number is, they call it EDIT, E-D-I-T. It's a major budget classification, and it will be for other services and charges justified iterated to you. $50,300 is requested, and we're hoping that you approve all $50,300. It will be adopted December 14th, 2021, and you have to sign nay or yea.
Okay. Any other questions, or is that...
No, that's it.
That's good, okay.
That's very generic.
Yes, okay.
Recommended by State Board of Accounts.
Okay, thank you. All right, so then I need a motion to approve. Are we going to call it a resolution or an ordinance, or do you use both words in there?
Just sweeping on it, that's the way they count it.
Okay, all right, fine. The resolution ordinance 2021-09 for additional appropriations.
Ooh.
Okay, Rich Young moves. And, I need a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mike Lanciaoni seconds. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. The ayes have it. Four, nothing, and the resolution ordinance has passed.
You can sign it.
Yes.
But we still have the rent of resolution and salary ordinance that needs to be signed.
Okay, here we go. Please sign those, okay? All right, so while you're signing those, then we can move on to our next section of your ready, Joan, with the reports, you know, the invoices, files.
Right, Anderson?
Yes.
Email with all of you, we need a copy, and we start with November 30th payroll taxes. Do you want me to go through all, or I'll give you a grand total?
You just give us a grand total, like it will be...
Grand total of $338.25, that includes all those with health and payroll, and what the employer has to pay.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from anyone? No, then I need a motion to approve these vouchers. Okay, Ralph Fox moves to accept, to approve. I need a second?
Second.
Okay. Rich Young seconds. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Michael, you can vote on this, too. Okay, four, nothing. Let us move on to the next one, then, Joan.
Okay. The next one would be the November 30th payroll, which is the transfer that nobody understands but me.
No, we understand now. It took a while, but we understand now.
Oh, you understand?
I think now we understand, yes.
Okay, so, the total amount, let me read through it. A phone, $45. $1,287.50 for the code enforcement building slash assistant building commissioner. An entry, $1,096.19. Employer FICA, $82.62. Employer LICA, Medicare, $19.32. That's transfer and everything off the budget, so we could pay the taxes that I just did. And that comes with $2,530.63.
Okay. We need it. Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, Ralph Fox seconds. Rich Young moves. Ralph Fox seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Okay, these vouchers have been approved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the November 30th additional budget.
Okay.
I'm gonna go through those real quick. General office supplies, $54.14. Nipco for garage electric, $22.73. Garage heat, $63.27. Electric streetlights, $18.15. Telephone and bath, $146.77. And removing grounds, moving four trees, $2,300. That's from light ditch. Cleaning around broken bench and picking up tree limbs and debris, $2,000, I mean, $200. And for removing trees from light ditch nature trail per contract, $4,750. And the reason it's on here, again, is because the check got damaged and I have to redo it. I know, it's so much fun. And the computer is just fantastic. And he also had mowing and blowing grass for both parks, $660. Chase Card Services, STR notification, for Orion Hamburg, $125.46. And domain fee of $12.99. And there is also the Adobe contract that we have, monthly, $60.04. Newman signs, that was for, signs that, some were stop signs, and I forgot what the other one was, but that was $205.65, including freight. Baker Tilly Accounting Services for the American Recovery Plan, $414.69. Freeman Associates, $1,000 retainer, $922.50 for the Zemmy's lawsuit. The Port County Hero Dispatch advertising for the additional appropriations. And I believe there was also a STR, $200.14. And Uline for two message boards, which are sitting in a garage till spring, $1,496.27. For a grand total of $12,628.80.
Okay. Any questions from council members? None? Okay. Then I need a motion to approve the vouchers on the November 30th additional vouchers.
I'll move.
Okay, Mike Lanciaoni moves.
He is here.
Second.
Okay, Rich Young seconds. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, the ayes have it, four, nothing, and these vouchers have been approved. Thank you.
And one last one. December vouchers, beginning of month vouchers, I probably should say. Michigan Shores Volunteer Fire Department, $3,575.80. Michigan Shores Volunteer Department, $105 for rent. Town of Long Beach, $1,877 for police protection. Public services, $3,888 for refuse pickup, $1,846.77. Dueling repair for machinery and a battery, it came to $203.50. Dueling repair, equipment and replaced rear salt spreader and hydraulic powder, $1,299.96. Department of Water Works, Kincaid Park, $9.49. Water for the garage, $949.00.
No, no, not 900.
$9.39. Brandon Heckman for travel to the bank or post office, $31.32. Office depot, stationary for any town lease collection flyer, $42. Comcast for internet, $79.69. Signature loans, $34,820. Leport Hero Argus advertising for another BCA, for two of them, $291.90. And are you sitting down, $49,289.20 has been spent. Bank account has been stolen.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
No? Then I need a motion to approve vouchers as presented to us.
I'll move.
Mike Lanciaoni moves. I need a second?
Second.
Okay, Rich Young seconds. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the ayes have it, and the motion is good. Vouchers are approved. All right, thank you very much, Joan.
And I'm looking at the mail, too, today. I'll have to go. Roy, what's his name? Campbell, is it? Has requested public records. He wants the last two months, October and November.
Oh, Chapman, Roy Chapman, Chapman.
Close enforcement officer's report for April, I mean, October and November. The plan commission for October and November, and I thought, he also wants the police report. I have sent him, oh, wait, I sent both police reports, right?
Okay.
But I don't have the plan commission signed, and I don't have the October one from the code enforcement office.
Okay.
We're going to have to get these, because we're getting more and more requests and stuff.
Then we will make sure that you have the signed copies of that, yes?
And once you get them signed, still have them underneath the...
Okay, very good, yes. We will get those for you, okay? And Deb, you know, you can get the code enforcement officer report for October?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you, Joan. Okay, so let's move into departmental reports. Let us go, all I'm going to do with the COVID-19 report is say that the last week's meeting, Leport County has a group that meets, it's, you know, council executives, it's got, you know, mayors and so, well, you know, mayors, yeah, within our county here, all kinds of people who work with various agencies, hospitals, schools, and so forth. And it's serious, because our numbers are rising, and it's, we are definitely in the red, and the numbers keep going up, so let's try to do our best. Pardon?
Red is the highest.
Yeah, red is the highest, but I mean, the numbers within red are going up, are going up, so let's do our best to spread the word to everybody to please, you know, get vaccinated and take care of yourselves, use your masks and so forth, so. Anyway, I think that we should encourage everyone, and if we know of somebody who needs some kind of help, you know, or encouragement to do something, then sure, and maybe we can convince people, you know, what they need to do, but hopefully, everybody's doing their best to fight this. So that's it for the COVID report there. So Chief Swistec, would you like to make a report?
Good evening, everyone. For the multiple member of the Long Beach Police Department responded to a total of 118 calls per service when compared to 141 calls per service in the previous year for a slight decrease of 23 calls per service. During the month of November, we documented seven incident reports, which resulted in five total arrests. Of those five arrests, all were traffic-related offenses, of which three of the arrests were related to operating a motor vehicle while intoxicated. In summary, the month was average. Of concern, we investigated two separate investigations related to possible overdose and/or misuse of narcotics. One was in the Dueling Beach community, where a 19-year-old was found unresponsive, transported by ambulance, has not recovered, and has returned home. And then the second incident occurred back on November 30th, where we responded along with the Michigan Volunteer Fire Department to the block of Okanagan Drive, in reference to an unresponsive 42-year-old male who was located within his bedroom by friends and family members. I'd like to commend the fire chief, Gary Bennetts, was first on scene. He began to apply lifesaving measures by giving CPR, attempted to use AED, however he called for a AED usage, and unfortunately, the 42-year-old male had succumbed to an unfortunate death, which is now being investigated by the coroner's office. We're waiting for toxicology and autopsy report for that particular call. We patrolled a total of 205 miles and spent 46 hours of patrol residence within the town. And then lastly, on behalf of myself and all the members of the Long Beach Police Department, we'd like to wish everyone a happy holidays and a healthy and safe New Year.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Any questions to anybody, to the chief?
No, there's none.
Nothing? All right, thank you very much, and happy holidays to you from all of us. Since the fire chief is not here, I do have a report here, and I'm sorry I didn't forward it to everybody, but I will do that immediately. But the fire report activity for the...
But the fire report activity for the month, two hundred and fourteen hours were spent during the month by the firefighters, either on calls for attention, training at home and away, meetings at home and away, and public relations or equipment maintenance. There was a general meeting on the third of November, a business meeting on the 10th, and training meeting on the 18th. Special training sessions, meetings away from home, or for mutual aid with new Buffalo Chiefs, at the Chiefs' meeting, 11:18. There were ten calls for attention, and one was, I believe, Dunland Beach, the first one. Then it was Village of Michiana, then another Dunland Beach, Village of Michiana, Village of Michiana, Village of Michiana, Dunland Beach, and then, okay, and I think that this is Michiana, then standby, oh no, there's a standby for Springfield Township. And then there was Village of Michiana, and then there was a Pokégan medical call in Michiana Shores. So that was it for this, and they are wishing everybody here a safe and happy holiday. Okay, and I will forward that to everybody momentarily. So, okay, thank you to the chief. Now, Road Commissioner Bob Sokowski also sent a short email that I think everybody should have gotten on his report. Did you, do you recall seeing that?
I saw it, I didn't read it.
Okay, it was a very short report here, so.
They're ready for winter.
They're ready for winter, basically, that's what he's telling us.
Bring it on.
Yeah, here we go, that's exactly right, he said. "We are ready for the snow." Total hours in November were seventeen and a half. They power-washed the pickup tractor and big truck, and they got all waxed. Installed reflective markers on the five stop signs on El Portal, patched hot holes on Hiwata and El Portal. And also, the road crew says that they do not see everyone, have a very merry Christmas. Okay, so that came from, from our road crew. Advisory Plan Commission, Ralph.
So unfortunately, we did not have a meeting this past week, we couldn't get into the building. But it was nothing really on the agenda that affected the public, we just had some internal topics to discuss. So it didn't really affect much of anything. And I think Dinah has since gotten the keys.
Well, I haven't gotten the key yet, but Gary contacted me twice, and he will have it for me.
Yeah, so we'll be, you know, regardless of who shows up, we'll be able to get into the door, so. It's good that way.
Okay, thank you very much, Ralph. Okay, for the BZI, Linda Stowicki did send through a report, and I can send that all to you. They did have the hearings for, and they were approved, both of them were approved, for a special use variance for Mr. Hamburg, who is Pokégan, I don't remember what it was, 211 Pokégan, and Pokégan Rentals, I think LLC is the name of it. And then, Pokégan Rentals LLC, the owner, the owner is Mr. Hamburg, and was approved as special grant, given the special grant. And then, the Mulaney-Hable Building Project on Oakdale also received their special, you know, their variance for the additional space underneath the house, which is... You sent those to me? Yes. Okay, so that was done, that was, yeah, from Linda Stowicki, so I'll forward that to everybody to read.
So sometime in the next meeting or two, we'll hear from 211 Pokégan here.
I would imagine, Joan said that all the paperwork was sent ten days ago. I sent it to all the council members about a week to ten days ago. I didn't take time to look for it in there tonight.
Yeah, you said it.
You've got it, so you can hold on a can. You've got it. Well, but I have not reviewed it, because I looked for it, but I didn't look for it, I didn't know what name to find it in, and I couldn't...
It's on the agenda to...
Well, you can, if you want to, if you want to tell us about it.
It was all fine, everything was in there, it was all proper, all totally denoted properly, no anomalies. I looked at it on Beacon, the occupancy, max occupancy was ten, all of his inspections were good, perfect application.
Okay.
Good briefing.
All right, so you are ready to make a recommendation or a motion to approve this short-term rental permit?
Yeah, for 211 Pokégan, which is Pokégan Rental LLC. I give a printed paperwork in anticipation, ready to go.
All right, okay. So you know what, I'm going to write that down under here, although we, I pulled it off of New Business, but we'll put it down under Departmental Reports then.
Just for reference, I don't have the email. Not, it's a big deal, I'm not trying to hold things up, but just for reference, Joan, make sure next time you, I'm not sure where it went, I didn't get it.
Well, we'll look and see.
Okay, that's fine. Prove me wrong.
And tell us the date, then I'll be able to look for mine by the date as well. I don't think Richie Young thought of it either.
It was December the 3rd at 4:43 PM.
I stayed overtime to do it. Okay.
You might have just sent it to me.
Oh. No, I don't think so. I think I sent it to you and Dinah, I don't think I sent it to the other council. Well, I'm not going to look for mine now, because this is hard to look.
It's only getting me, but, you know, maybe you sent it to somebody else, too.
Okay, good, for future reference.
That's fine, that's fine, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So we have, so we have moved, we haven't voted yet. Okay, you made a motion?
I made a motion.
Okay, and who seconds?
I'll second that.
Okay, Ralph Bach seconds. The approval of a short-term rental permit to Pokégan Rentals LLC, okay, is what it's called. Okay, thank you very much. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. So the affirmative STR has been approved.
I've signed these, you need to sign it where I've noted, and give it to Joan.
Very good, we'll pass it.
Give a copy, give.
Oh, yeah.
Ryan Hamburg, ready to get it.
There we go, all right. All right, I will take care of that momentarily.
Anticipating performance.
Just rest of your computer, all the data?
Normally, I would like to review it, yes.
I will forward it to you right now.
I don't need this one.
Can you forward that to me, too?
I will forward it right now, yes.
Okay. All right, while that is taking place, Deb, what kind of a report do you have for us as our Building Commissioner and Code Enforcement?
All right, so as we all talked about, 211 Pokégan getting approved, and now approved for the permanent as well, that's great. 3627 Pokégan, the coffee house, there were some questions about...
Pop Hatton, you mean?
Pop Hatton, I'm sorry, yes, you're right. Sorry, there were some questions about their occupancy there, because it looks very unfinished. But they've been working with the county Building Commissioner, and they had reached out to me and asked, you know, would I be okay if they issued the occupancy permit, you know, early as long as the building inspector, you know, approved it. And I said, yes, if it's okay with the building inspector, if it's safe, then that is fine. So they did get an occupancy permit, even though there are a few things that need to be held up. So, and if someone else raised some issues, like the ramp, apparently that's not high enough to require a rail anyway, so.
Wow.
Not going to be a requirement.
So just a flexible wooden ramp as an entrance to the home is acceptable to the county?
Yeah, so it is.
Little bar.
I could replace with, you know, cement.
Oh, I'm sure they'll have nice stairs eventually.
And I did look at it, it does have braces under it, and it's not, you know, not as supportive. So, and, so anyway, though, they, you know, they are comfortable with it, there are a few more things they have to finish up, but they felt comfortable, and the building inspector will be, you know, making that.
What about with cutting down that tree that's right there?
They can cut that tree down, as long as they leave, you know, part of that some, and I had indicated this to...
A big mulberry tree that's right there.
Pardon, yes, yes, and I had indicated this to Kay back even in September, and I said, as of the end of September, when the bat season finishes, I said, you can take the tree down, but, you know, I don't know why they, you know, they haven't done anything yet with it, but...
Well, the interesting thing is going to be to see what happens with the mud pit and floodway. They can't really do much with, although it's a mud pit and floodway right now, that's compacted, it'll be a pond every time it rains, but that's the only deal, but whatever.
So the 3951 Hiwata Temporary Stay Award was resolved, settled, and which is Venus, a twenty-five million dollar fine.
Let me just interrupt you, Joan, did those checks clear? I did check, I still do. Okay. Oh, you didn't receive any notice and saying anything else, so we should be good, okay?
What was this?
Okay, Jamie's, Jamie's, the 3915 Hiwata.
3915 Hiwata.
Yes.
So two members of the fund is paid five thousand dollars in attorney fees to Freedom Associates. He does still plan to submit an application for a permit to install a swimming pool between the house and the creek. But, you know, he'll submit it, and the funding commission will review it and make their decision. The collections ordinance that we had been working on, I edited, and Laura Merrimer, the attorney, edited. We've not gotten for them, so I felt like I'd done all the edits I needed to do, but she said that's going to be held over for the next attorney.
Okay, yeah, because it is, we're near the end of the year, so I could see that.
And then there were some collections that the town council asked to pursue, and I've submitted all that information to Laura, and she's going to pursue that, those collections on three STR applications.
Okay, and what about the two?
So it's Commons, 343 Birchwood, Torcha, 354 Birchwood, and then Hanley-Williams at 417 Pokégan.
Across the street from me, Deb.
Okay. Okay, and what about the Grabelny and Banks issues?
So those are, you know, those are still pending, I've not gotten service back, I've tried to serve them, and have not gotten proof of service. So we're going to, you know, have to keep, you know, just outing them. So they're just kind of, they disappeared for the winter fairly, and we're just going to have to keep on recommending pictures of those stairs all the time. One of the things I did was attend the VNR permitting and the flood hazard zone, and I thought we should think about putting some more regulations. On the east side, we are allowed to regulate ten feet landward of the ordinary high watermark. And so we can, you know, we can't regulate, our regulations can't be stricter than VNRs. So it's something that we might want to think about before the conference of plan to do in the future. So that, and that would better oversee what happened there on that property.
What about, what's the owner at, I've been getting before, on Dreamwall, Barack or whatever?
Barack.
Okay. So, not high on that, man, that place is a disaster. I mean, it's like, it looks like that, I mean, there's debris, construction materials strewn about. I mean, if I lived next door or across the street from that, I'd be living there. I mean, it's absolutely horrid. And it's, I mean, I don't know how long we've been working on this place, but it's been a long time. And I mean, don't we have a year, you have to be done in a year on the building permit? It does, it's crazy, we're having it coming up on a year if we haven't already, but regardless, I mean, it's not appropriate to have equipment, construction, debris, trash. I mean, there's like a tent thing that's out there, blown over upside down, there's, there's stone, there's rubble from the stone. I mean, it's pandemonium over there, so we got to do something. And it's not fair to the other residents that are next to it.
Yeah, well, maybe then, in that case, you can, we get to sit there, and, you know, where we reach out to Mr. Barack via email with a reminder.
Yeah, check the permit, and just see what kind of...
Well, he, remember, he got his permit from us fairly late in the season, so he's only more than half a year in on his official permits.
But some of the permits are old, though, because he had some permits posted on the house.
That were older, but then he got, he had to renew and reapply, so that, you know, he's, he's not, he's under his one year, he got under that, so...
So I think that he has to construct a garage as well, and so maybe seeing him at the planning commission.
Oh, is that an indication he gave you?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So back question, do you know who was responsible for this list?
I've got it updated.
Mike did, yeah, Mike did, so, yeah.
What are you, what are you sharing?
Well, this is the list of the approved short-term rentals.
Oh, okay, all right. So I didn't see you while you're sending it, so I posted on the door.
I'm sending right now.
Excellent.
I don't think I saw one now, okay, I'll complain.
I'm sorry, we, we...
Yeah, so now that we've passed the renewal resolution, I will notify Kaplan, he's a nineteen-year-old. And he bought a house that wasn't permitted, and he told him that he would have to start over, so I'll inform him that the new resolution is next year. Unless we're, so otherwise, just...
The only Megan Baller at 3651, I don't think is renewed.
She indicated, yes, she was the email, I told her, I said, just email, she wants it renewed.
Next email, perfect.
You didn't do anything? Okay, I'll go.
It expired on October 20.
Right, I had talked to her, and she said, yeah, she wants it renewed, no changes, and I said, I'll just email town hall.
So if we have people that are interested in knowing if their neighbor or people across the street have renewed, they have to contact you, right, Deb?
Sure.
I mean, I'm not going to know, because you guys don't tell me, so I can just as soon stay out of it, but I need somebody to answer their questions when they request information.
I would, you know, recommend that at some point, if you want to change that permit, that they put a window that include an expiration date.
Oh, that's a good idea.
The problem with that is if somebody has an update.
Yeah, and I'm not doing that. I'm doing it once, I'm not doing it twice.
Okay, now how hard would it be to literally write down expires?
Or an issue date.
Okay, one year from this date, just literally write down, expires.
Who's going to go back over and knock on the door and ask them to get the permit?
Well, you're keeping a list anyway, right?
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
I updated on the list.
Yeah.
But I'm not going around and updating.
No, no, not at their houses, but you know...
Let me clarify, what would be the advantage of having that information on that thing posted in somebody's window?
Well, like Joan suggested, that there are people who wonder if people have received a permit.
Okay, so I would, I would have an issue if strangers wander up on the front porch and start checking stuff out. I mean, would you have a problem with that?
Well, it's what the permit is there for, right, it's for people to see.
The ordinance says that's being listed.
Right, in the window, it doesn't say, it means strangers can walk up and look in your windows. I'm just saying that there's an other side to this.
Somebody that's renting is having a flea market in the front yard, and you live next door, and go, this isn't cool, man, who owns that? You go over and get the phone number and call them up, go, what the hell are you doing?
I know what you're saying, I'm just saying, it's not a...
I thought you hoped that witness could come to your door every day, too, you know?
But there's also, there's no easy way to manage it with that green piece of paper, I mean...
You can't stop it from coming up to your door, I mean...
I know, but I can make one of those and put it in the window.
If it's anybody, you can.
It's, I agree with the permit post, I look for those when I walk around town at the known locations to see if they have them. But I don't walk up on the steps.
That's true, like I said, it, you know, it was the person to activate the individual with the STR to renew it again. And then perhaps if we check up on them and find out, if nobody has come to Deb, and she is the person who is keeping the list, she knows that they have to be renewed, so, you know, Deb reminds them. And that's it, and that's, and that's all that we can do, because, yeah, private property is private property, so. Okay, let us move on to the next.
So I just wanted to, otherwise, just...
Oh, you're done, or no? Oh, I'm so sorry.
Just got advice on, they're having complaints about dumping yard waste and other people's property, I've been trying to drag that down.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yes, and it was huge, yeah.
Okay, unfortunately, I'm sorry I interrupted you. Any more things?
No.
That's it, okay.
Never have worked here.
All right, okay, great, thank you very much. Then we have going on, oh, here I am, next, White Ditch, very short meeting this morning, and we weren't on the agenda for anything, however, I did report to them, I had sent word to them that the, we had more, I didn't actually make it to the meeting, so that I was, you know, not there, but I mean, I had been on an email and on the phone with Christine Kyle, who is the secretary for the White Ditch Drainage Board, and reported on them, that they, reported to them that we have more trees down across the ditch. I know for sure that there is, I can't tell if it's one or two, because I didn't walk on that section, where they're literally across like a bridge, they are two, it looks like two, okay, but I didn't know if it was, you know, one of these doubles. And then Mick Wolf informed me that there are some others that are down in other places.
Yeah, I walked, this is a couple of weeks ago when I walked it, and there were, I'll say about four, small to medium size, across the creek. They're not a major issue. One that you mentioned is fell during the storm the other day.
Right, this is just the other day.
It's not near as big as the ones that fell.
Right, 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 this is much smaller, yeah, these are smaller.
But it's, it's an issue.
They're just western.
It's trees, both.
Smaller trees from south to north, they fell from south.
We have to take care of them.
Yes, those are the ones that we have to take care of. So I spoke with Mick, you know, about these trees, and I said that you may have to be, you know, but you have... you know, but you handle all of that, Rich, with regards to Mick, right, for the trees?
So I was gonna bring it up, but you want Mick to do it.
Yes, please, that would be good to do that. And I have asked him on behalf of the Drainage Board, because Christine Kyle had asked me to let him know that he needs to check the area for the drainage board, which is from El Portal Hedy East, so he's gonna do that. Mick agreed to do that, so that was it for the Drainage Board report. Samantha did not submit anything else new, except that she said that she would get, you know, like a little holiday newsletter off to everybody, and that's it, you know, those who were signed up for emails.
So I have a question about that, and I didn't, this is not a Samantha thing, it's just a website question. I was just checking to see what meeting minutes are posted.
Okay.
Kind of all over the place, but with the town council meeting minutes, there's nothing posted for 2021.
Yes.
Twenty twenty is there, and nineteen, that's, that's fair. What, is there a reason that we're not posting them?
Nothing, I have not even, you know, I have not even thought about it. She didn't ask me directly for the minutes, not that that's, you know, an excuse of mine. But then we will get together with Joan, and when Joan can give us a scanned copy.
I have the website, where people can go and listen to the meeting.
Well, but minutes, posting the minutes would still be, you know, something we can do.
We go the effort to create the physical minutes, we should post them like we have traditionally.
We should.
I say we should, as a member of the town council.
We should, we were, we were already posting them before, we should post them no matter what, they've always been available to watch via the thing, but we have been posting minutes, so if we do them, and once we've started doing it, we should continue with those. So, so I think that that would be a good idea, so that when we can get a scanned copy of the signed minutes, Joan, that we can pass them over.
That's one of the problems, trying to get them signed. In their account, waiting for people to come in and sign them.
Well, the minutes are signed by me, I sign them for you, I come in there and sign them, oh, no.
I understand there's a time delay, it's just that we don't have any for this year.
Absolutely, right, and we should do that, so, so I will ask, okay, so we're asking then that we can, you know, get copies of the scanned, you know, minutes and to get those posted. And while, since we did mention that word, I know it doesn't say anything right here about that, I will ask, if you, Joan, can we please let us know who else needs to sign the document that's out on your counter? Because I saw there was a document there when I.
That's right, you, you.
There's something has to be signed here, so please don't go home yet tonight until you sign, there's something that.
The ordinance is still sitting there, because we aren't getting them until after the meeting, so.
Okay, so everybody, please make sure you sign those before you go home.
Yeah, I know.
All right, thank you, okay.
I signed yours and nobody would ever know.
Well.
Fair enough.
Go, go!
All right, okay.
No one, well, I know that.
Okay, so now, under unfinished business, I had included after message boards, and it looks like the boards are ordered and they're in, correct?
Yeah, they're on a pallet in the garage.
Awesome.
I think the question, though, that I had Joan is, it was Jim first, and then it was Gary, who's gonna try to find the electricity line that fed to this message board? Any update on that?
No.
Okay, is it Gary now or Jim?
Gary is the one that's chief, and he's the one that was told that we would like to get.
So then I'll follow with him. And then in an email, she asked for a resolution for COVID funds, so I gave it to you yesterday, so I worded it, is that all you need?
That's all I need, they approved it to be paid, but I'll hold a check until we get that.
Okay.
Great, excellent, all right.
But.
They may not be happy, we may have to pay interest on it, because we should have had it for tonight's meeting, I requested it, and it should have been here.
And then halfway it gets ordered, but then in the spring, we were gonna install that.
Correct.
We could install that.
Well, we need to find out, I know Rich has been in charge of doing all, Rich has volunteered to do all of that kind of stuff in the past, so I don't know whether, can you still work on helping put those in, or should we look for someone else? What do you think, what's your suggestion?
Where are they going?
I think that we had to.
They'll go by the park.
The one, one is going to go at King Kate Park somewhere, we have to make a decision where at King Kate Park. And then the other one would be going in front of, you know, where the, oh my God, Osmolak houses on Michiana Drive, it's right next to McClendon's, that's, you know, they've got the car park there. We can move a little farther up and place the sign over in that grassy area, there's like a mailbox in there, and in that grassy area, right over there.
People are not gonna be happy.
Well, but that's, they may not be happy, but this is, you know, that is the right way for the use of the town, correct?
Bob Sokowski might do it, because he asked me about the park signs, and I told him that you do the park signs, and by the way, they are in.
No, I just wanted to say thanks.
Well, they would be a long time ago, and then it would be two or three.
Okay, well, but it's all done, thank you very much, so, anyway, but that is the thought, that that's where it would go in that area, because that's an entrance, many people drive up that way, and people go for walks that way, so that's a perfect place to put that kind of a board, and it's an attractive board, it's not like an unsightly thing, so.
And I'll have a thing any of us, or I can actually.
Well, I understand that, but, you know, we're gonna, we will let them know what's gonna be taking place, we'll have to, you know, have to notify them in advance.
I think it's fair to let them know that.
Absolutely, yeah.
And because it is gonna be right in front of their house, we need to be a little cautious about how it's positioned.
Absolutely, yeah.
But, you know, just like if you put it in front of your house, you would be interested in that.
Right, absolutely, yeah, yes.
Just don't show up with a.
Oh, no, 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 we, of course, we have to notify them, okay? So, yeah, so it's between the Osmolak, and I don't remember the last name of the next house office, so, you know.
We can scratch this from the agenda then.
That would be, that would be it for the next, you know, it's all done.
I've done my deed for the.
Yes, okay.
You're morning.
Yes, yes, absolutely, you're all done. Okay, so, quantification of the town ordinances, I did have conversations, and I am waiting to get some news, I've sent them copies of what our ordinances look like, and I have given them, you know, a number, I didn't give them all of the data, you know, on the ordinances, I didn't send them, I don't have, for instance, all the ordinances that we have in the town, but I, and I said, this is an example, I have so many, blah, 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 the ones that I've been given, and I said that would have to be added, so we're gonna, looking at some, getting some kind of, just two companies that, you know, responded to my request.
Good.
Are you getting a quote?
Quotes, yeah, I'm getting a quote to see what they would tell me, what would be involved and so forth, so I'll report out on more of that, you know, once I get more information from them.
Me too.
Okay, so, under the new business, and actually, I am going to make a change to this, add something to this agenda as well, but first of all, with the community crossings grant, the P A S A report was completed, this is what I have, Joan had provided us some information about, telling us that we needed to contact John Doyle, and we would need to get a new P A S A report done, an update on it. And at first I was very hesitant, because I thought they told us it's good for five years, why do we need it now? So actually, Mr. Doyle called me up, and then I spoke with Pam Bender at Purdue LTAP, and, you know, we did find out that now things have changed, and we have to renew this every two years, which makes it a greater burden on us, but that's what we have to do in order to apply for any kind of funding with regards to our roads and paving and so forth. So this is why, you know, I had reached out and asked, you know, and told you guys, you know, that, you know, we're gonna need to do something, and we had to get it done by a certain date, so Ms. Bender told me, get it done by the first week, it should have been December first, but they were, if Mr. Doyle was able to get it done by the December seventh. So now we are, at least, we have, you know, that prepared, and it's ready, and it's been, you know, submitted to, at least it's on record with them, so we're, one, they have one step ahead.
May I have a second?
Please.
Yeah. The P A S A report is not the original five-year, that still stays in place.
Okay.
The P A S A report shows what we've actually done, and that the roads were done according to the specifications that were required, that's what we have to do that every two years.
Okay.
But the other five-year plans don't.
We can still use it, okay.
So the P A S A report is just confirmation of what was done, whether it was done correctly.
Well, it's what we're doing, and they know, it's almost like a report that I have to do for D N R to make sure everything is done.
Okay.
And would it make sense, because every two years, that's pretty hefty, right? A couple thousand?
No, it's more than a couple thousand, you know, yeah.
Is it, would it make sense to start adding that to the budget, just to?
Not this year, next year.
No, that's a good suggestion.
I'll get your memory banks for next year.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
That's your job, Michael, okay?
I agree with you.
You're right.
You need to build it in, that's a big budget item.
This is a big item, it is, you know, so.
Even more important, guys, is if you're going to spend that money, because it's, I think the next one is over a hundred thousand dollars, and we have to come up with twenty-five percent. And some of them are over, well over a hundred thousand dollars.
The grants.
Every one of you have the report, because I sent it to you. Take a look at that report, so we're on the second year, look at the second year.
Okay, all right, so that is that, now, what I should have had under here, as well as the search for a new attorney for our town, because last, you know, last month, we had officially, you know, given, we read out the letter that, you know, the attorneys had submitted to us, that, you know, they're stepping back, because Laura was limiting her hours and so forth, so we're looking for a new attorney. So at that point in time, I reached out to several of the firms that we had interviewed just to talk to them and find out what's going on, one of them was David Hollenbeck, I forgot the name of his entire firm, and then there was Greg Sokowski, who was a Harris, Harris doctors, Davis, Davis, or Davis Harris, I, you know, whatever, but, anyway, so I did speak with these individuals, and Mr. Hollenbeck might even be, might be interested, as well as an associate who works with Greg Sokowski, because he's also slowing down on some of his work, was interested in it, so I would not be making any kind of decisions on my own, but anyway, those are the two I spoke with. Now, I had a good conversation with Teresa Massa, and Teresa had taken a look, oh, let me step back, I had gotten some information from the council, who, the chief council for AIM, the Advancing Indiana Municipalities, and I got back a list of potential attorneys that might be good, and I shared this with all of you. And Teresa got to see the one that Ralph had, and took a look, and right away, you know, indicated which firms absolutely do not do anything in actual municipality, where they basically like to, you know, make money off the fact that municipalities might have to file legal claims somewhere and do things or make a business in that sense, but they are not like municipal lawyers and providing us guidance on how to work as a town. So, and then she is doing some more, she promised to do some more research for us and get some more info on some of the other attorneys that were on this list, so I think that will be very helpful and valuable to us, so I appreciate what Teresa is doing on that. So last time around, I had asked Mike and Michael to help out with, you know, looking for those attorneys, and at this time around, and I know you two are very busy, you know, with Workwise and projects right now, so I then asked now Rich and Ralph to help, and they have agreed, I don't know whether they're enthusiastic about it or not, but I did ask them, and they did agree to help do the interviews, you know, so I'm making some phone calls and then asking the other two to set up, you know, probably phone or Zoom or whatever, you know, to, and then we'll be able to, they'll share out their information with us, and we will ultimately be able to make some kind of a recommendation.
Pull the trigger at the end of the year, right?
I'm sorry?
We have to make a decision by the.
Well, no, no, I mean, we can, you know what, they're withdrawing as of the end of this year, now, if we need something, we can still turn to them, of course, it would be on their municipal hourly rate at that, I think that's what it said, Laura, are you here? I'm not sure Laura's still on, and.
No, I'm not gone, guy, I'm just, I'm listening, I'm hearing like every other still.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I said that, I said that you would be available if we needed legal assistance, you would be available, but it would be at an hourly rate, and I am hoping that it is the municipal hourly rate. So I'm not sure which it's going to be.
The cheaper one?
The cheapest one.
But to your point, Michael, we should move as quickly as we can, but still do the due diligence.
Right, absolutely, so I will.
And I would also add that once we narrowed it down to whom we want to make an offer to, I would open it to any of you guys to have a conversation with them as well, if you wanted to, but we'll go through the selection process and narrow it down.
That sounds fine to me, that sounds great.
I don't want to cut you guys out.
No, I just know that both of them are very involved with, you know, work things that were, you know, so time consuming, I didn't want to ask more. So anyway, but that's a report on finding an attorney, okay? And, okay, so now Laura, do you have anything else for us?
I have nothing that comes to mind.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, you know, on that, now then I will move on to miscellaneous business. Collection of outstanding fines, I think we already got that report from Deb, so I think I'll remove that for this part of the agenda for future. Purchase of equipment to hold hybrid meetings, now, do you think we need anything else, or we're working out okay with this, it looks like?
Well, my comment is, is I don't think the device we have is gonna work for audio very well, you can.
Did you hear me okay on the phone?
Yes, could you hear us okay?
It was a little off, well, the Dyna coughing, now that I see it, I can, just the distance.
But I think that if, I'm gonna look and see, I meant to look before the meeting, if we can get external mics for this device, because if we had a couple of external mics, we have three mics that we could put around the table, I think it would be fine, and if somebody from the audience in the future wants to say anything, they can come up and talk closer.
Sure.
Hey, Ralph?
Wow.
Yes.
Yes, I agree wholeheartedly with what you're saying, you sound crystal clear, but the minute somebody else speaks, it's, it's like, if they're in trouble, so maybe the additional lines would really be beneficial.
Okay, thanks for the input.
Then I'm going to ask Ralph then, since you already started looking into something, maybe you can continue working on that, okay? All right, thank you very much, okay. Now, the celebration of the town's seventy-five years, if you just give me a moment here, I'm gonna bring up that email that I got, and let's see where this is, oops, wait a minute, I got it wrong. Now that it was here, not far away, let me just find this. I meant to print one out, making it easier, but I'll, I'll send everybody, it's just a very short note that I got. Oh, there she is, okay. All right, I think this is it. Okay, here's, here's what she writes. I am honored to be, if you all recall, you know, we had invited her, the town council had invited her to, or to take, you know, command of the committee that would organize our seventy-fifth anniversary celebrations here in town. And the reason, you know, for asking somebody who is not an actual elected member here is that all these elected board members already have a lot of things to do, our elected clerk treasurer is, you know, is barely keeping her head above water with all the work that she has to do, and we really shouldn't use the same people here to work, but get other people involved to work on a committee like this. And of course, all of us, when it comes time for it, I am hoping that all of us will be able to volunteer to shift tables, serve food, you know, run pony rides, or whatever needs to be done when our celebrations take place, but, you know, that we would be, you know, available to do that, but let, you know, a committee that is not made up of, you know, elected people actually take the reins and work on this while reporting to us. So anyway, this is her report, I am honored to be chosen to head up the seventy-fifth anniversary committee, and I thank you. A steering committee has been formed, Jean Paxton, Skip Moffo, Carol Burnier, Teresa Massa, Sam Paxton, Bob Sokowski, Gary Bendix, Pat Pablo, and Sonia Lanzioni, with Dinah Dungres as a town council liaison. And then she writes that Sonia and Dinah could not be present for the November fifteen meeting that was held at her home. The committee met on November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, at thirty-eight thirteen, Michiana Drive, at seven P M., to discuss a preliminary potential agenda for next year. Michiana Drive at 7:00 PM to discuss a preliminary potential agenda for next year. We would like to come forward with the town council's approval to have a family picnic and a parade with games, a parade of golf carts, which will be led by the town council and clerk treasurer, pickleball tournaments, and games for kids. We are also respectfully asking that the horse ordinance be suspended that day, so trailer carriage rights might take place. We also know that this would involve involvement of the stable and of our insurance agent, and we will wait for your decision on this aspect of the proposed plan. We also are respectfully asking if a dinner dance may be held at the firehouse on August 27. This event would include beer and wine, food, and a band for dancing. We would like to have a meeting on January 17, 2022, open to all volunteers and anyone who wants to participate to pursue whatever events are approved by the council. Other ideas are being pursued, including a small event, including the theater and sportswear that would need to be approved through the park board. Thank you very much. Respectfully submitted, Jean Paxton. So that's the news, you know, of what they had done. So it would probably, I mean, I'm looking forward to having something interesting done. And I think it'll be a lot of fun. We just have to make sure we get people interested and involved, you know, on a celebration like that. So, anyway. Communications received. I will let you know that I received, I'll start backwards. I received several phone calls regarding the leaf pickup. It was people I who called last year saying that, you know, they, you know, they don't rake their leaves. I had one call me and tell me they don't rake their leaves. They let them sit where they are, you know, so they're not gonna pay for leaf pickup. And I said, well, this is a townwide bill that gets sent out to everybody. Well, I'm not, you know, they're yelling at me on the phone. I said, well, thank you very much for your comments. And, you know, I don't make any kind of promises like I'm taking your fees off for you or whatever. So, and then, you know, a very pleasant gentleman also called me, an older gentleman, and said, he said, no, I have somebody else do it for me and I'm not going to do this. And then, and that was really basically it this year. You know, I had more calls last year. So I may get more later on. But these are the two I received. Then I received an email from NIPSCO regarding the replacement of the light bulb in the post at the railroad crossing. So they have, what is it, made out a ticket? They have gotten a light bulb or whatever fixture. They're gonna know what they're gonna do, the equipment they're gonna put in. And they are just waiting for a crew. And they were hoping to get this done for us within the next week or so.
So this is NIPSCO?
NIPSCO, not Michigan City. Because I went to first, I mean, I was calling on everybody's doors. So, and then it turned out that when NIPSCO, when they checked Michigan City, went to check the post out, Michigan City found that it is not a Michigan City light bulb, but it is a NIPSCO light, Nipco-SCO responsible light. So you would not believe the trailer emails I have, you know, that comes with this.
Be glad, girl, she gets a purple light put in it and then think about the calls she made.
Oh, my God. We were talking about that earlier today, already. Okay? About the purple lights on Cleveland, right?
Yes.
Anyway, so, and I, you know, maybe that's a thought. Maybe I should write, please do an uninstalled purple light. Okay. That's, that's a good thought, actually. Then the other communication I received was from Christopher Johnson, who is the superintendent of water in Michigan City. And I think I've given a little bit of, you know, reports earlier. They did some work on Contra train, the western end Contra train, where a Mr., oh my goodness, I'm gonna say the, I shouldn't say the name because otherwise I'll get it wrong, the resident that lives there. But they, he had called me at one time, you know, saying that they have problems over there. And because I had already spoken with Mr. Johnson before, I suggested to him contact here, you know, the water company itself request the work. And then they got the okay and took care of the end over there. They were over on Hiawatha maybe two weeks ago, maybe not even less. And they were working on Hiawatha, trying to do a lesser, less invasive kind of procedure to try to get the water pumping a little faster to the homes on Hiawatha. They're past Gary, it's actually, I think, only two homes or three homes that have a problem. But, but for them, it's serious. They want better water pressure. And anyway, so they're supposed to be doing that work within the next, he said, a week. I don't know. It's already been probably five days. So I don't know how soon that's gonna happen. That they will work, in case you saw the markings near Gary Bendix's house. You, I'm sure, have seen.
Yeah, so.
How did he do that?
They did, they, but that didn't work as well. They have to do something else to make it, you know, to do something.
So do they let you know once they've done something?
Um, you know what? I've been tracking them down to ask them. Because I haven't gotten a report.
It'd be good to talk to the residents after they've done something to see if there's an effect on their-
Well, the, and I'm really, oh my God, it's like Neo or Packer or Knackers. It's a very short name for the person who lives way west on Contra train. But I can't remember his last name right now. I've got it, maybe I have it somewhere here.
I mean, the, at the place I have in Hiawatha, the water pressure's terrible there.
Which one? Oh, that one?
Yeah.
So your, your pressure's very bad where you're at as well.
If I'd known something's been done.
Okay. Well, you know what? Then we will, I didn't realize on your end that it's bad. But the gentleman who was fixed, I mean, he called me and he was like, oh my God, they did such a great job. Thank you so much for telling me what to do and blah, blah, blah. So he was really happy.
Well, check into that.
That it was done. But you might have, you might have to call them in too. And I will let him know then, you know, with this Christopher Johnson, to let him know that there is issues at other places on Hiawatha. And I don't know, I've never heard from anybody else there, you know, if anybody's said anything, you know, on the water. Rich, did you ever hear from the people who were on the corner? That Deb and Sam Oakner? Did they ever complain about any water over there? No?
No.
Okay. They may get their water off of El Portal, because like Gary Bendix-
The lady had to get it.
Uh huh.
It was both.
Yes, yes, she did. Corinne. Yeah. Corinne McGraw. Mm-hmm. Yes. So, but anyway, so that's what was taken care of with regards to those. Now, any public comments? Any public in public? No, no public here wanting to comment. Okay. How about, Randy, you have anything to say?
Water pressure's terrible on Grove 1-2.
It is? By you too? Oh, my goodness. Well, there's another comment we have to make. All right.
We asked them for years. And they said that when we switched over to Michigan City, they said that we're gonna work on that, something about a main coming off of the water.
Okay. Well, I'm glad that you mentioned that because now I will have something to write back to, you know, when I call. I'll make a call. So again, I can have a better, you know, discussion about it. So I'm glad to-
Was it all over?
Well, one of the-
I know that I have it as, I have a lot of complaints. Like Joe.
Is-
I've never remembered.
No?
No.
But she's a whole block away, so it may be different, you know?
I'll try next time.
Mm-hmm. I don't know. I don't, I don't know. Now, I did get a comment from the water department. I think it was Christopher Johnson who said it, that they have, at first they had a lot of confusion because they did not receive, I guess, adequate, like, you know, maps and things that, you know, the Michiana Village, Village of Michiana or something like this, they had, and that they've had a problem with that. So their, and the biggest issue is that where they're using more of a PVC type of pipes, they can't even tell where they're at in the ground. So it's making it very difficult for them. And he said it's a bigger challenge than they expected when they first started out. So, so hopefully they'll be able to, as time goes on, you know, in hope, in all the streets. So, anyway, back to our comments. All right. So now we have our public comment about water on Grove 1. I made a note about that, water on Grove 1. And council comments.
Apeyala, is everybody? Well, I would, I would like to thank Laura for her help this past year.
Absolutely.
I know, we may talk to you again, Laura, if we need help. But thanks. I wish you could stay on. But I understand.
Yeah. Well, we're, we're not gonna say goodbye completely because we are going-
It's extraordinarily kind, Ralph. Thank you. You guys have been coming this far with our-
Sure, Laura.
Jenny.
Yeah.
It's just funny how life has taken a turn here. So I apologize for any inconvenience. This is paused.
Oh, it's okay.
You know, that's it. The light goes on and things change. So, any other comments from anybody else? From council? Okay. Well, I'm gonna join Rich in saying that as well, wishing everybody, everyone in town and everything a very great holiday season. Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, a lot of health and happiness going forward, you know, and seeing everybody, you know, out on the streets and enjoying town. Okay. Now, before we leave though, hold on. We have to have our end of year meeting. So I have put December 30th currently, and December 30th is going to be, check your calendar. What day is that? Is that a Friday?
Thursday.
It's a Thursday. All right. So.
It's a Thursday.
It is a Thursday for sure. That's right. The 30th, New Year's Eve was Friday. Yeah. So we can hold this on that day? We can hold it?
What's the purpose of this meeting again?
To end up with all the things you have to sign. You have to sign a-
It's a very short meeting.
Agreement. And you have to sign the transfers, because I have to transfer some funds around within. All I have to do is let you know what they are and you approve them because-
Okay. So we can make it very specific to those requirements.
Oh, yes. It's not a general meeting like this. It's a short meeting, generally.
Generally, it's not very long.[1698.62]